Killed the.
Yes.
Where's your?
That's okay.
Where, right here?
Philip on Lost Canyon Road.
She's the first person I call. But they have a lot of space for things.
I can act.
But it's grass.
The ones keep.
You ready Shane? Are we still?
You ready?
I'm ready. Okay, so Shane Basford will speak with us about Billy Cordova Memorial Park contracting.
Yes, alright. Good evening Mayor and Board of Trustees. So a quick overview of the request tonight, so. We went through the whole RFP process for general construction for Billy Cordova Memorial Park. We had two, you know, pretty qualified companies put in proposals for the contract or for the project. And we reviewed those as a team and like to move forward with one of those contractors, the Summit Construction Group. However, looking at the budget, we were. Basically our total numbers, which I included in the packet and then some slightly updated numbers up on the screen here, but they're mostly the same as they were in your packet. Basically had a little bit of a shortfall, so we kind of met and talked as a staff and had kind of three approaches we could. Just kind of throw out to you all to see what you think. And with some staff recommendations as well, so basically those first, the first option would be to continue with this, the whole scope of the project. As proposed, but to do that, we would need to commit some unbudgeted funds from cash reserves. The second option would be removing items from the scope of the project and the third option being transferring from other projects in the budget for this year. So. Yeah, basically up on the screen here and in your packet is a breakdown of the funds, so. We were anticipating this project being over budget kind of as we were going through the process. But we knew we had some of these funds that, you know, we could potentially count on, you know, the donations that have come in through the park. Our park fee and lieu that we've been accruing over the past few years. But. So after kind of exhausting all of those funds and a few of those funds are still outstanding. Earl and I will be going to the county commissioners next Tuesday on the 18th to request for the 48,000 they had committed in their conservation trust fund. For the Arizona Street Bridge, we're going to ask them to repurpose those funds for this park project as it also includes a trail. Like the previous project did and it's also. A part that we beneficial for the entire region and then the bench sponsorship that. Basically just comes down to us actually selling those sponsorships, so there's five benches in the park we have identified. Throughout the process, we've wanted those to be kind of pay tribute to our local first responder agencies, so. And on one side of those benches, they would have the logo of our five first responder agencies JP EMS, BB PD, BB Sheriff, JD Fire. And Search and Rescue and then the other half being, the other side of the bench being a sponsorship opportunity for. An organization or a business or an individual to purchase and they could put a message like they would, they would want on that, the other side of the bench. So that would be the bench sponsorship funds and, you know, the 25,000 is just contingent on us selling all five of those benches. They're about twenty six, twenty seven thousand dollars apiece for the actual benches with the additional cost being the fundraising for the park.
Did you say twenty seven thousand?
Sorry, twenty seven hundred.
I was gonna say like that is an expensive.
Twenty seven thousand, I was thinking of three, but that'll, you know.
They must be very fancy.
Yeah.
So all, with all those available funds get us to, you know, a little over 1.4 million. And then basically they broke out all of the expenses we've been planning for the project. You know, kind of the non-construction expenses and including the expensive, we've already, we've already committed to the project totaling. Almost 650,000 and then with the bid of the Summit Construction Group and that is with a little bit of negotiation with them throughout the process. You know, do a little bit of value engineering to shave a little bit off of their numbers, but still leaving us with the grand total of. 1.5 million dollars needed, so gets us to that funding shortfall of 148,000. But we have also recognized that there is. Other potential savings in the project, we just haven't had the time to flush those out yet. Those, so there is a total of 413,000 dollars worth of concrete. Boulders and rocks basically throughout the project, it's about 280,000 of concrete, the rest being boulders and rocks. But being that we live here, obviously we have tons of boulders, we have tons of rocks, so we would definitely have an option to source those. And basically only pay for the transportation costs, loading and transportation costs from other areas around town. We have a couple of different sources, some being the rocks down over here in South Maine, some also being the rocks that Billy Cordova actually had stored at his house, so. But, and then additionally with the concrete and if. It is decided to purchase some of the rocks, if not all, you know, if we purchased the pea gravel, you know, things like that through ACA. They have, ACA has expressed interest in being a part of this project and. Typically in our past projects, like the Pickleball Courts, they have given us a discount on their material price and so. On Thursday this week is our pre-construction meeting with Summit. Construction group that we are planning and then planning after that meeting, basically kind of sitting down and find, working to finalize these numbers, so. We're anticipating at least a 10% discount on. That 400,000 dollar number, but that could potentially be more, we just definitely wanted to estimate on the conservative side for a discount that we haven't fully secured yet. So obviously option A. Or option one, you know, if you guys feel that, you know, we should design the park as is, we can go, go forward with that and commit. Unbudgeted funds from cash reserves on Friday last week, we met as a staff, Philip, Brian and I, to try to figure out, okay, so where. Where can we find this 106,000, so evaluating those options. We kind of narrowed down those areas on the bottom right there, so. I think the, the best potential source of funds for the project is the remainder in the rodeo grounds project, so we budgeted 45,000 dollars for. Lighting upgrades and bucking shoe upgrades at the rodeo grounds, those have come in. At least 20,000 dollars under budget, we got the. A lot of that work, that work is pretty much completed with the, taking the 20,000 dollars from this pro, from that project and committing it to Billy Cordova Memorial Park. Would leave a little bit excess in that rodeo account. If there are any outstanding expenses, I think somewhere around like 3,000 dollars, if we do have any additional expenses there at the rodeo grounds. And we also identified two areas where we could cut or cut back. If you see in the expenses, we have 40,000 budgeted for memorial art, that's kind of what we had been just putting in the budget the entire time. But, you know, I think we could cut that back to 20,000 and still get some pretty good memorial art pieces and that would be. That has been a big desire of the community group and what we have received a number of donations towards is that memorial art. But I think we'd still do quite a bit with 20,000, whether it be a sculpture, a painting, you know, various items. And those ones, the memorial, the memorial art we've been planning, it would be specifically to honor Billy Cordova. And then the item we would potentially cut out of the project would be the outdoor workout equipment. There are three outdoor workout pieces planned in the park that we originally had, you know. They were a feature that adults could use in the park was kind of the reason they were originally included in the design as well as we thought we had a pretty good funding source. And a good grant opportunity that could specifically fund those pieces, but we did not get approved for that grant through next 50. So we would potentially cut those out of the project, those three items totaling a little over 60,000 dollars. And then basically the remainder. We thought we could cut from the ball field drainage and turf project mainly because that is just our project that is probably. The furthest on the horizon where we still have a fair, you know, even with the 80,000 we currently have in the budget. There's still a pretty significant funding shortfall. So. That is kind of what we threw together to get us to the 106,000 dollars, so. Provided. Yeah, you all agree with those strategies and we can, you know, work through and talk through some of the other options as well. Then we would request to go into, or we would request for. The approval to enter in agreement with Summit Construction Group, no greater than the. 893,000, but likely that number would decrease once we, with the concrete boulders and rock discount. We just don't know that full number yet, so we don't have the final. Contract in front of you guys.
For the items to cut, the trail construction and plantings, are we talking about like, are those pieces of the project that would be cut or would it be like the whole trail construction and all the plantings?
So that would be the plantings under five gallons, so there would still be. I think there's 13 trees in the project, but that would be us not putting any small plantings in the ground. Either to, and that could be an item, we could either cut or come back to in future budgets soon seasons. The trail construction that would be just not constructing it as a part of the original park build, but that one, that is. For 14,800 of cash expense for labor and aggregate, we do also, that item does come. We do have a cash commitment from Buna Vista Single Track and a good amount of in-kind labor committed from Buna Vista Single Track for that trail as well.
Is this your general, like, is this what you want to do or is this, are you hoping that we can dedicate funds from reserve?
Um, yeah, I, I'm great with going forward with the plan, the plan we came forward. Utilizing the rodeo grounds, cutting back on the art, removing the outdoor workout equipment and. Allocating a little bit from our ball field project. If, you know, it'd be great to, you know, build the whole thing as, as designed, but you know. This, this project is significantly more than what we, we thought, so if we have to cut back on a few other areas to get it built, this is our highest priority project, so.
Thank you.
Andrew? On the project funds to transfer, you've got community center doors and ADA openers, are you proposing that those not be installed?
That, I, it, those are basically all of our projects that we have not actually begun to purchase this year in this year's budget. So that would be if we did choose to cut that, we would not install those this year. Ultimately, they'd probably come back in another budget cycle, we did also originally a plan for. Our, our apply for a grant that we thought was going to be very promising that could potentially have funded those and. I don't think that grant is gonna be quite as lucrative as we thought, so those were basically all of the budget items that we had not really. Either had remained, had a potential remainder or had not started or had previously committed funds towards.
My opinion would be not to cut, not to cut those, the ADA openers, that serves a different segment of our. Community who has previously reached out to us to ask for it and I think that would be. I'd like to keep that on, on our priority of us to try to get done this year.
I, I agree, we were just throwing everything out there.
Spinball.
Yeah, I think this has been an awesome job from the team leader to really crunch the numbers and figure it out, so. I definitely support whatever you think is the best choice.
What is the status on the baseball drainage and turf?
So the, the drainage, you know, I think we have a pretty good Band-Aid on it, we use some of the. The previous funds, you know, that originally was 100,000 in the bu, in the budget last year. We had some engineering done, it wasn't quite what we were looking for, but it got us a few ideas of how we could handle that drainage. Staff has put a pretty good Band-Aid on the project and we have some potential. Ideas of how to, you know, basically keep us operating without it being a huge issue, but ultimately in the long term. You know, there is a lot of improvements needed, so. We're, I think we're good, we've kind of solved. Solve the flooding issue.
Hard to fight by another nature.
Yeah, it's, it's still floods a little bit, but it's ma, we've, we've been managing a lot, managing it a lot better, but. So yeah, we've got a pretty good Band-Aid on it and so now it's looking for long-term solutions for that field, which currently. Yeah, currently thinking turf, but you know, that's up for future discussions as well.
Sorry, one, another question for our treasurer.
Yes.
Are there, are there pros and cons and what considerations would you offer if there was a. Suggestion just to cover the overage from cash reserves?
So yeah, it's a good, good discussion and something we looked at in the work session, we talked about in the work session last quarterly. Reports show that we do have cash balance unrestricted in the general fund capital improvement fund, so it is a consideration. The challenge with doing that right now is the staff and board typically look at it in a silo as opposed to. Against other priorities, which we do during the budget process. So it's hard to stop everything and then look at, okay, what are all the projects that were identified going into 2025 plus everything that's new that might have popped up since last budget, last fall. So it's really hard to weigh adding money to this against other competing priorities without starting a whole new budget cycle, so. That, I think Brian and I are on the same page with, we really don't recommend pulling from unrestricted fund balance unless it's urgent. Or there really is a clear opportunity, opportunity cost if you don't pursue. So that's why we felt like a good solution would be to, to kind of squeeze where it's logical without losing the integrity of the project. I think what's, what Shane has presented is pretty, pretty sound.
So option one, commit unbudgeted funds is not an option that you would recommend?
Not at this time, no. Again, I was just throwing all the options out there to.
Yeah, they were just trying to wait through, what, what, what is, what is the, what is the ask and what is the recommendation?
Trust your eyes, so the one, the other reason why I think Shane has that in there. Is by making a decision to enter into a contract tonight, you have to consider the worst case scenario, worst case scenario, it's not that horrible in the situation, but it is. 1.552 million dollars in case we weren't successful getting some of these other things taken out, all the puts and takes that have been talked about. What if that didn't come to fruition, so the, the worst case scenario would be we proceed in the interest of time and getting this project moving along. Recognizing that if the alternatives couldn't happen or the board didn't want them to happen, we would have to pull from unrestricted fund balance. Does that make sense?
A little bit, sort of.
If the proposal from staff or the recommendation is to basically approve this spreadsheet, I'm okay with that as long as. We can come back and address some of these specific line items through the budget process in the future, I don't want to lose them. Yeah.
But would you go back through the list of things that we're talking about cutting?
Yes, so the, the easiest, I, I feel like the easiest one to recommit is remainder, is rodeo grounds remainder. That one was just, we were, I, I kind of had it over there on the right instead of kind of over on the left with the Walton Loop remainder. Mainly because, you know, I hadn't had the conversations with Sean about where we were with the rodeo grounds projects, so. Now we feel like that's a pretty solid number and that's kind of the, an easy. Project to redirect fun, funds from because the project is completed. And then it would be cutting back the memorial art from 40,000 to 20,000. And then removing the outdoor workout equipment from the project. And then. And then let, let, and then recommitting a portion of the funds that are currently allocated to ball field drainage and turf. But that one is currently listed at 46,000, but if we get a larger discount from ACA, from ACA and from the rocks and boulders. That number would shrink as well.
So we're really not talking about the plantings and the trail construction, correct?
Correct, correct, we're not proposing.
Okay.
The intention of that is the goal, really, two things is to avoid a budget amendment, pulling from reserves without going through a process to weigh against other projects. That's priority number one, priority number two is to, to finish it, right, to finish it this year. So not removing elements with the idea that we'll come back next year.
Okay.
The goal is still to complete the project this year and so identifying elements that can be taken out of the, of the scope with the intention of not a later phase. We're coming back to it, but taking them out.
Permanently.
So I think the proposal way out here, this was like an all inclusive list as far as these boxes up here that Shane put together. All inclusive, but these are the items we're actually talking about, so as far as reallocation of funds, rodeo grounds. When you're looking at that project, the project has been completed, so if the project was budgeted, we got it done, we just had cost savings comparatively to the budget, so that one seems like. A low hanging fruit, memorial art budget at 40. Reducing it to 20, so it's still getting memorial art, still included in the overall project, so that seems like another one that seems like a viable option. The outdoor equipment, the talk around that one is. You have excess outdoor equipment at this location that's been talked about being replaced for a number of years. Potentially that should be replaced before implementing new ones into a new park. Still looking at that, utilizing those funds to improve exercise equipment here. As well as focusing on park concept, right, for kids, for outdoor, for gathering. So that was one of the items to cut from Summit bid, multi-purpose court is one of those you'd have to come back for. Stabilize crusher fines, not big dollars on that, so another one we felt reasonable to consider for cut and then as far as the ball field, like you said, that project's not slated to actually. Be done, budgetary estimates, what, eight, nine hundred thousand? So we don't have the funding to implement that project at this time and really it's an up to 46, as Shane said, the, the hope was to increase this. And as that number increases, this number increases.
Sorry for the confusion, our packet looks a little different, so I just.
So the ask is what you're highlighting right there, that's your, that's your plan to get.
Yeah, so that was, in the, in the packet, it was throwing out, I think.
Everything.
You felt like this was everything.
Alright, Jayden, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so to move this along a little bit here, I think we're, I think we've got that. To make a motion, do we have to amend it with the notes that are there or can we? Does that have to be mentioned within what is currently stated for the resolution right now for 51 to approve it?
Nothing so. The motion has to go ahead with the contract.
Right. With the understanding you'll be doing this, okay, cool.
Yep, and then, so yeah, and then once we finalize the amount of. The agreement with Summit and enter into that contract just because it is a very tight timeframe, we'd like to start construction next week hopefully. And then we'd come back for the official budget reallocation to, for you guys to approve that to. Yeah.
Cool. We'll make a motion to approve resolution 51, series of 2024.
Second?
Legretti and Roe, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? If the motion passes.
We're able to get going next week, so.
Thanks to everybody, I know you're going to try and try and do.
It's really.
Alright, just make a quick comment, thanks for all the discussion, but also let's remember for Saturday, we have the. 5K, Memorial 5K for the Billy Cordova Park and also we're having the groundbreaking ceremony at 12 noon on Saturday, so I'd love to have you all there if you're available. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl, Devon's gonna fill in for me, is there something else?
I have, I don't know if I should do this during staff interaction or what, but I have questions on how something works, because a couple. Weeks ago, you had done something under budget and you just spent the extra 4,000 on something that you already wanted. The rodeo grounds doesn't gonna keep the extra because they, they saved the town money and was under budget, but we're taking that money back from them. So, and I feel it's vital that we have. The automatic opening doors is more important to our community than a kids' park. And the kids' park is very important and I want that park to happen, but I, I don't know how that works, so if you have something else that comes in. Under project. Are gonna gladly give that money to Billy Cordova Park and put it into. That little bucket instead of putting it somewhere else, because. It does bother me that our sales tax is down a little bit, things are changing, we don't know how drastically they're gonna change, but. We're, we do have limits on what we can spend, yeah.
I think we want to bring that up again at June 25th, when you all come back with a proposal, I understand what you're saying and I think you all do as well, right? So we'll take that into consideration when we come back.
Yep, yes, the, all, all of the projects listed were basically just the ones that we, that weren't tied to grant funding. Or that we had not begun or completed yet, so ever, the. Billy Cordova Memorial Park is definitely our number one is our. Uh, department, as a department, it's our number one priority. So, yeah, we've been. Allocating pretty much most of the funds, um, yeah, available to that, that part. Yeah, we did have some extra that we, um, we did spend, but, um. Yeah, we. Were anticipating a, a little, a little better proposal at the time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thanks Cindy. Okay, let's go to item number C, uh, which has to do with vacating the right of way on Bristol Aljair. Tracks minor subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so this is a statutory requirement or regarding ordinance number twelve. To vacate any sort of town right of way, we have to approve it through ordinance, what the trustees needs to. This is related to a subdivision that has been in the works and we've been working on it for a number of months now and, you know, various. Phasing because of, well, fits and starts just because of other circumstances. So, um. One thing, uh. You know, we call it a subdivision because the town code lumps a whole bunch of things together as a subdivision. But it isn't dividing any lots and we're not reviewing that particular thing tonight, but I did include some background material on it for the trustees, just so you know what's going on. Um, there's two landowners, um, one is wanting to sell a portion of land to another, so they're doing a lot line adjustment. Taking one chunk and just changing the lot line to the others. Meanwhile, or at the same time. Um, each of the landowners has a, of lots within their property, so they wanna consolidate. The lots, so, um, like the, I think the Bristol property has maybe three or four different lots, and so they wanna make it one. And, and so the Alguire, so, um, so that's just a, a real easy, um, process that, uh, is an administrative process for that, which we've gone through and we've all but approved. Uh, approved it, but there is this request to vacate. Uh, small portion that comes off of Pleasant Avenue, the property, um, it's a, um, on South Pleasant, you can see. You know, the Bristol's place is in the orange there, there's the property up top and, and the Bristol's place is in the orange. That little green dashed square is a right of way that was created to access, um. The portion to the west. Of that property, um. There's a barn or something built on that and when you consolidate the lots, um, to make one big lot, there's no need for a right of way to access something that is to the west. And so, um, if this property were ever to go through a subdivision to create additional lots, you know, do a. Create five lots, let's say, or whatever it might be, then at that point we would, um, make sure all lots had access to South Pleasant and a new right of way. That made sense could be put in place. So this is a kind of a, this sort of a, um. Procedural cleanup, if you will. I don't know why it was created or, or when it was really created, it had to do with that, that property in the west. And, um, because they're consolidating, makes sense to not have that as town right of way anymore. So, especially again, because there's like a barn in the middle of it, so. So the request for the trustees is to review, um. Review the packet and should you, uh. After review, we're here to answer questions and then any kind of motion to approve or approve of amendments or deny ordinance number twelve. Uh, that would vacate this subject right of way to, uh, the Bristol property and that property would. The right of way would become part of the three twenty six South Pleasant, which is the, the Bristol.
Trustees have questions? Is there some? Uh, risk to the town or anyone else in, in doing this?
Often, often you, the town, uh. Doesn't like vacating right, rights of way. We have done some like Utah Street over here with the collegiate commons, we did a little chunk. Um, that was going into the, um, middle school property, school property, and we did a little chunk, uh, for the last. You know, decade and a half up at the elementary school. There was a road going through the elementary school. So there are times where you wanna vacate properties. And times when you don't. And in this case, this is, again, this, this goes into a property that is, um, becoming one big parcel. And so any future actual division of land, uh, subdividing. Um, into more parcels would. Um, necessitate having access to those and a new right of way in a, in a spot that made more sense. Depending on what the, the configuration of the property would be. Most of that land is floodplain anyway, so. Um, so I don't, I don't think there's. Really, I, I, we can't see really much of a risk.
Yeah, I think on page, um. Sure looks like the majority of the parcels floodplain, so. Developing in a floodplain is a challenge in and of itself. Yeah. Question call about it.
Well, I was gonna say, I know, isn't FEMA doing a re-something or other, aren't they? Uh, I guess doing a review of floodplains and lands like that and I don't know when that comes out, a year, two years?
It's supposed to be in twenty four, I think, but they're doing a two dimensional sort of one dimensional remapping of it. I don't know. Um, what the impact of. Of that is gonna be, but, but this is pretty, I mean, the water table. Is, I mean, there's a, some ponds and stuff all over the west that fill up every year. Um, there's a property just to the south, well, that, that has a sun pump down in it that, uh. You know, every year pumps things out, so it's pretty high water table there.
I was just curious, cause I was like, if it, that changes, it does that affect the fact of taking away the right of way, but it doesn't matter or anything if.
What it won't because of the, the. Any, any further subdivision, splitting on into smaller lots there, we would need that access and that would become part.
What's the noting on this now?
It's, uh, R, R one. Low density residential.
I move we adopt ordinance number twelve.
Would you like to make a motion on that?
I move we adopt ordinance number twelve.
Okay, um, is there a second? So Rice and Rosinar. Okay, uh, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, Andrew. Great. Okay, uh, trustee staff interaction. I don't know if I ever told you all, but, uh, the mayor of Colorado Springs appeared here one day and, and wanted to meet. So he contacted Paula. Anyway, he's a very nice guy. It's really interesting. He's an, uh, American, um. Nigerian-American businessman. And, uh, he's independent. You know, not part of the Republicans. There's, there's never been a, um, African-American town or, or mayor in Colorado Springs and. And almost always, always they're Republicans, but anyway, that's pretty cool of me. So, um. Nika?
Um, no comments from you today.
Thank you. Devon?
I'm good.
Cindy?
Um, everybody here was, um, definite success that here and a lot of you. People might not be interested, but, um. They are out of seating capacity in the rodeo grounds by a lot. Yeah, and the, and that's kind of a sad problem, a, a, a nice problem to have that. And, yeah, and it's definitely family entertainment. It was good and I'm glad our packet was short, so I could.
You know? Um, two things first, uh, just. PSA, I guess, are just lots of river incidents. It's more my search and rescue hat, so be careful out there, have fun, but. Know your, know your ability, what you can handle right now, so, um, been out there quite a bit over the past weekend, so. Um, yeah, and other thing, uh, just looking ahead to Tribe View annexation, uh, completeness for next week. Um, one thing I'll probably look for, and I don't even know if, well, one thing I'm kind of focused on for the project is know the revegetation. Um, or they have to revegetate it and all that. I'm curious of how that will be done. And if it's gonna be kind of chemicals and things like that, because there are landowners in that area and as it comes downhill, I'm just kind of curious about before. Things will get rolling, is that, will that be in the packet? Can we have information on that? So I believe Tribe View is the one that has to, I think, apply those constraints and do the revegetation and things like that, so.
Yeah, so the, um, the process for that, that's a, that's really placeholder right now. We still have some, uh. Legal review to do on the, the annexation agreement. So hopefully it's a completeness review. You might remember with like the top side, the first. The first meeting was really, well, one, first Paula said, hey, here's the information, right? And it's a distribution communication with the board, which could happen in a meeting or via email. The completeness review is that analysis, do they have? Uh, all of the things turned in? Yeah, it is complete and then we set a hearing between thirty and sixty days out. At that hearing, um, we'll have Tribe View. Come and they'll do a presentation, um, to, so everyone knows what Tribe View is and the Chicago Ridge, the project and that kind of thing. And that'd be, um. At that time, we will, by then we'll have like the zoning and, uh, the annexation agreement that we could look at as well. Not necessarily for. Approval or not, right, depending. And at that point, that'd be a great time to ask all those kinds of questions.
I just figure this wouldn't be. You know, so wildlife, there's farms nearby, there's springs that feed farms, so just wanna make sure whatever they utilize. So anyway, I'll save it for then, but.
I know the intent is to not do that, but I don't think that, I don't think in the annexation agreement that it forbids things. No, um, but we'd have to, we'd have to double check and, and I think it would contemplate. Them doing maybe three applications of whatever, if anything, mostly it'd be for noxious weeds, not for other stuff. And then town would do the other. Parts, but.
Weed issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we'd have more regulation over it, but that would.
But it's, I mean, it's more of an integrated management kind of a scheme. And so it's, I mean, there were comments about not doing that stuff and they've been working with the, uh, neighbors and with some of that, so.
Okay, okay, good to know.
Uh, definitely something. Pay attention.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that now, even though it might not even be on the agenda for the next two weeks, so.
Nothing further to add.
All right.
Quick one from me from the beautification board meeting, um, last Thursday. The Main Street planters are at for, um, adopted planters, so anybody who's interested. You can get information from Paul at Town Hall, and, and we're also, the beautification board is looking for, um, ideas and brainstorming on how we can. And have a more cohesive relationship between Highway twenty four and Main Street as far as looks go with all of the barriers that that presents. So anybody has any good ideas, send them over, all right?
Great. Sean?
Yeah, um, crack sale projects this week, starting Thursday, once you Thursday, maybe a little prep work, some science out. And hopefully some of the crosswalk thermal relays will also be installed this week as well, so. Um, just a personal note. Some of us knew Billy, some of us knew him pretty well, I knew him pretty good. Yeah, I think I had a pretty, pretty good chuckle tonight, watching this kind of try to hang myself, so.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not here.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm a little. No, I, I was just bringing up Billy, you know, if, um, thinking about, yeah, him listening to, let's talk about money and the park and rodeo. I just think it, we had to forget a lot tonight.
I never got to know him. Paula?
I have nothing. Summertime and BV. No left turns.
You can do it.
Out of a death lane?
I am now, you're learning after eight years how to utilize that center lane of the highway. Yeah, it's only up to let you merge, so. Yeah. Out of the death lane.
Brian?
Uh, one thing that might help with left turns, reconstruction meeting on the Baylor, uh, DePaul stoplights Thursday. So we'll have a little bit more of a timeline for you after that, when that looks to start or no left turns for a while, I don't know. The other thing I wanted to just touch on real quick, uh, Sean and me with leasing gates and so. Wanted to get your thoughts as far as the town's got a parking agreement to utilize behind the administrative buildings for the school district. Half of that lot is used or fenced off for the McGinnis Gym construction. The other half is really filled with construction work and parking, so there's really not any overflow parking. In that location, um, kind of the proposal transfer in that agreement over to the southern portion of the arch property. Um, really kind of just doing minimal work, not spending a lot of money on it. It's not something they wanna permanent. You know, structure attachment to, um, but would help with kind of this season. Uh, before we find more of a permanent solution, um, just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention if there's any. Hard egg with pursuing that concept, um. Or if you're all right with kind of going down that road.
As long as our trace.
I was gonna say, just don't knock that.
Far away from the arch as possible, uh, but we would, uh, put rope, uh, made it, make a designated entrance into it. John's gonna, yeah, try not to hit the arch while he's got the grader out there. But no, it'd be the southern portion, so if you can see the arches here. Man, updated aerial, this thing is not something. Finally shows on aerial, it wasn't there.
It just happened, didn't it?
No, we would utilize probably about the three quarters of this to the southern portion of it, about a hundred feet. Um, from Chestnut to the north. Now I'll draw a map for. Sean, we'll take it from there. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Phillip?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay.
Two items, one, uh, comprehensive plan, open house, you guys all get invitation or at least one. Thursday, the twentieth from five to seven thirty. It's a great place to bring the beautification folk out, cause part of it could be, what does a highway take a look at? Look like, right? Just start getting that input. Um, visionary, so.
Be visionary, maybe.
Be visionary, that's right. And we did send that email out that, uh, that, uh, ordinance number six related top side annexation was pulled off the agenda and they, cause they pulled the petition for annexation. So next steps, they'll do something with the county, um, any kind of subdivision. I think there's a moratorium anyway on subdivisions in the county, so it'll just be. Building application some form and will still act as a referral agency. And at some point, um, they would need a, still an annexation agreement with the town to negotiate that for, uh. Any kind of proposal then there. So anyway, um, unless they petition again at some point, which I can do. So we won't be seeing that.
Does that mean if, if it comes back, it would start over at step one?
Right.
One more thing I forgot to mention, um, this is just a thought or an observation, but I mean, and it's probably, I don't know if it's. Turning more and more, well, it's, it's definitely busy in town during summer, I get that, but larger vehicles, things like that, you know, I noticed more and more. Well, larger vehicles parking and they hang out into the road and for safety sake, you see cars. Swerving into the other lane to get around them, cause the cars are too long for the spots.
Main Street?
Was that? And I was just, just wondering like, I mean, obviously up by the railroad, there's lots of parking. Just, I don't know, spitballing the idea of like, is there something we should be thinking about or possibly, I don't know, consider that, hey, you know, if your car can't fit in space. You should park on, uh, side street or.
In the absence, Georgia, they have a line across the back of the space, but, and if your car doesn't fit, you have to go somewhere else. In the Athens, Georgia, they have a line across the back of the space, but, and if your car doesn't fit, you have to go somewhere else.
It's just, there's a lot of people walking around for safety's sake, you know, we, was it fifteen mile an hour for a reason that, because it's so busy, but when you have some of these huge vehicles, they're just have so much hanging out.
A lot of bikes have to go around them.
And that too, so anyhow, just, I know it's early in the summer, but that's an observation. Is there something that we can?
I personally noticed too, usually they're not up to the front of the space if they're hanging out the back end, but I don't know how we can fully enforce that. But usually they're not, there's room up, they could be closer to the.
Our attorney has popped up.
I gotta, I gotta say something tonight. I, I, I feel bad just sitting here silently, but that's probably a, a good thing. But, you know, I, I haven't read the details in your model traffic code and your parking regulations, but I suspect there's something in there about, you know, having to park appropriately so you aren't interfering with traffic flow. I've never actually seen this issue come up, like you're, you're too long for the spot, but I can take a peek, just there's gotta be something in there that could be, you can, you can give them warnings, you could issue tickets. And if there isn't something in there, you know, we could always look at adding something if we need to.
Sean could drive the motor grader down the street fast.
It's mainly like campers on the back of trucks, they don't realize how much more hangs out, and then you have trucks with, you know, number four recreation, but they have the racks and things like that. Yeah, and like, again, love it, come play, it's great, but just know your space, yeah. There's other, there's other places they can park, but anyway, just safety.
Or if you own a store on Main Street, you don't park on Main Street. Or if you work on Main Street, you don't park on Main Street.
That's one question.
Whole other issue, but.
People are jumping out behind those long cars, and you're not always seeing them, and it, yeah. The potential archway overflow parking, is that something that we could maybe look at for, like, Main Street employers, employees?
Yeah, it'll be public parking, basically, and so the idea that, yeah, if you can get employees and those parking over there, one helps set the tone for other people coming that, no, they can park over there. To free up some spots, so it's really just gonna be kind of a word of mouth, but I'm, that's really, I think, approaching individual businesses to say, hey, we just made some parking for your employees if they could go over there. But, yeah, hopefully people start to get used to it. We'll look at signage, really address it. There's some signage over there. How do we reposition it and maybe relabel it? Just says parking, doesn't say public parking, like this. Yeah, we can look at that. Jeff, if you do wanna look at enforcement ability, I would say that's a good first step, and then we can talk, you know, staff-wise with Dean and Grant, and maybe it's signage, maybe it's painting, maybe it's something along those lines, so.
Yeah, I was just peeking at the model traffic code right now while you're talking. I, I'm not finding anything directly on point here, but there's gotta be something about not blocking the right-of-way, regardless of how you're doing it, so. I'll, I'll look around for a little bit, and there may not be anything. We may have to actually add some kind of rule to prevent it in the future, so. I'm, I'll take a peek, but I won't break the, break the bank looking at it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Shane, you have anything else?
Uh, just a few things real quick. Yeah, high, high water, we've had to close a few trails down by the river, just waters going over the banks a little bit, but we have a lot of aggregate from our previous trail work. So, I'm feel confident we can address that once the water goes down. And then, now that the, the rodeo is over, we've met with Dan a few times, and we'll work on the M O U with them. And they've mentioned their, one of their top concerns is seating, so that won't be on the list.
Great, thank you. Does the media have any comments, or do you wanna share with us?
I don't speak up if you have recorded.
I can't quote myself.